All right, folks, we're going to get started. Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. In attendance, we have President Nick Mosby, from the members of the committee, myself, Councilman Burnett from the 8th District, Z. Cohen from the 1st District, Antonio Glover from the 13th District, Felicia Porter from the 10th District, and Odette Ramos from the 14th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I don't see any other council members in attendance.
I believe Councilmember Costello was on here as well, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And now I've got Councilman Costello from the 11th District. I don't see any other council members in attendance. Move on to members from the Office of the President. We have Nikki Thompson on the line.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Matt Stegman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Aaron DeGraffanreit. And we'll move on to representatives of the mayor's office. We have Natasha Mihou on the line. And Nina Themelis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. This afternoon, the committee will have a hearing for Bill Number 21-0001, Surveillance Technology in Baltimore for the purpose of prohibiting Baltimore City government from purchasing or obtaining certain face surveillance technology, prohibiting Baltimore City government from contracting or subcontracting with another for the purpose of face surveillance technology, prohibiting any person in Baltimore City from obtaining, retaining, assessing, or using certain face surveillance technology for any information obtained from certain face surveillance technology, requiring the Director of Baltimore City Information and Technology to submit an annual report to the mayor and city council regarding the use of surveillance by the mayor and city council, providing for certain termination dates, providing for certain penalties, and defining certain terms. This bill was introduced on January 11, 2021, and the bill was sponsored by Councilmember Chris Burnett. And I'm going to open the floor to Councilman Burnett for Councilman's sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, for joining today on this nice Wednesday afternoon. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me a couple of minutes to open with sort of a little bit of written testimony around like what the bill does, trying to answer questions that came up the last time and sort of a rationale for why I feel this is important for us to take up in the city council. So I wanted to take some time to explain the bill, its rationale, how this version differs from the bill introduced in 2022 after feedback from colleagues on the city council, advocates, and agency staff. Council Bill 21-001, Surveillance Technology in Baltimore, places essentially at this point a one-year, a little over a year moratorium on the purchasing of facial recognition technology by public and private entities and places limitations on the use of facial recognition technology by Baltimore City government and private entities. Unlike the previous version of this bill, it is not a wide-ranging ban on the use of the technology. Also, after receiving feedback from several very productive meetings with staff at the Baltimore City Police Department, we made sure to explicitly exclude the Baltimore City Police Department's use of the Maryland Image Repository System from the moratorium. This was made very clear in Section 414 and Page 2 of the bill, which reads, "Nothing in this section applies to any contract, agreement, or memorandum of understanding for access to or the use of the Maryland Image Repository System." To explain this further, colleagues, the Maryland Image Repository System is what the Baltimore City Police Department uses to identify suspects along with other law enforcement agencies from across the state. I made certain to include this language in the bill, despite the fact that Article 2 in the Baltimore City Charter also makes it very clear that the Baltimore City Council cannot impede on the actions of the Baltimore City Police Department. To put it simply, the bill does not prohibit the use of MERS, which is the acronym that the police department uses for their purposes for investigation. I think it's also important to note that the legislation has granted exemptions for the use of this technology for regulating access to government buildings, commercial buildings, private residences. It also does not prohibit access to your personal devices, such as cell phones or private security systems that people may choose to install inside of their residences or doorbells. It also provides far-reaching exemptions for cybersecurity systems, access to government technology such as computers, and it makes it very clear that this is allowable for use by 911 dispatch systems, early warning alert systems, and so much more. I also want to note that my intention with this bill is not to impede the Baltimore City Police Department from investigating crime in Baltimore City. I do believe, however, that it is important that we raise questions about how the technology is currently deployed to ensure that there's oversight, transparency, and the rights and civil liberties of our citizens, the citizens of Baltimore City are protected. So why do I think this is critical? It is critical for this body to follow jurisdictions from all across the country in regulating the use of this technology. I'll start with a quote from the CEO of IBM. IBM firmly opposes and will not condone the use of any technology, including facial recognition technology offered by other vendors for mass surveillance, racial profiling, violations of basic human rights and freedoms, or any purpose which is not consistent with our values. This was included in a letter to Congress alongside public statements from Amazon, Microsoft, and several other large technology companies announcing that they were ceasing the sale of facial recognition technology to law enforcement agencies across the United States due to racial bias in the algorithms used in the technology, which has been repeatedly shown to incorrectly identify people of color, particularly dark-skinned black women. In fact, Joy Balowini, who, a black woman and doctoral candidate at MIT Media Lab, found that commercially available facial recognition systems did not detect her face until she placed a white mask over it. In her 2018 study, which did a deeper dive into the issue, she and her colleagues at MIT reported that the software failed up to one in three times when classifying faces of black women. Subsequent studies by the National Institute of Standards and Technology confirmed these findings. And members of Congress even experienced this firsthand when the ACLU of Northern California tested facial recognition technology and found that it falsely matched 28 members of Congress themselves with a mugshot database. Implicit bias in technology is why I'm asking this body to join jurisdictions across the country in regulating the use of technology to protect communities of color from unjust actions from law enforcement and private companies. I will close, Mr. Chair, with a quote from a letter sent just last week to President Biden from over 40 civil rights organizations across the country. Facial recognition technology is already responsible for multiple false arrests, mistaken incarcerations of black men. It disproportionately misidentifies and misclassifies people of color, trans people, women, and other marginalized groups, causing harm to schools, homes, and communities. And it threatens our core constitutional freedoms, including the freedom of association and speech, due process protections, and privacy rights. When combined with existing networks of surveillance cameras dotting our urban and suburban landscapes, facial recognition algorithms could enable governments to track public movements, habits, and associations of all people at all times merely with the push of a button. This kind of all-seeing, all-knowing surveillance evokes science fiction dystopias. But in the year 2021, persistent tracking of all people in America in public spaces with facial recognition technology is no longer relegated to the realm of fiction. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and committee members for hearing me out, and I look forward to a very positive and productive dialogue on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. The committee will now hear from agency representatives, and we're going to start off first with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. Chantay, are you on?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, council members. The Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement has reviewed Council Bill 21-0001, and our agency position is to support it with amendments. I'll be brief in sharing with you all what our position is associated fiscal notes in the amendments that we're looking to see made. My office is responsible for the financial administration of the city's closed-circuit TV system, also known as CityWatch. CityWatch is a collaborative effort that includes not only the Baltimore Police Department, B-SIT, and MONC, but also includes external stakeholders, specifically members of the Baltimore City community. In Baltimore, the system is made up of over 800 CCTV cameras, and it's contributed to almost 1,500 arrests between 2016 and 2020. I don't have any numbers about arrests that may have been made erroneously to speak to the councilman's point about misidentification of persons arrested because of facial recognition software. So the bill will adversely affect the operation of the CityWatch rebate program as it currently stands, that was launched in fiscal year 21. That program allows awards of $150 vouchers and rebates to residents and businesses that want to install cameras and connect them to the CityWatch network to serve as co-producers, if you will, of public safety. With regard to fiscal impact, the agency currently maintains a funding budget of $2.2 million of contracts to monitor the CityWatch network and $750,000 of annual subscription costs for the gunshot detection technology that BPD uses. That's also used in conjunction with the cameras to assist in criminal investigations. Should these systems no longer be accessed or used, this funding would need to be reallocated to other MONC-related initiatives. The agency also budgets $400,000 reimbursements or receives $400,000 reimbursements annually from the Housing Authority of Baltimore City for cameras around their buildings and $180,000 of gambling local impact aid for installation and maintenance of cameras in neighborhoods surrounding Horseshoe Casino and Pembroke Racetrack. As I mentioned before, in April 2020, the city adopted an ordinance to establish the rebate program that I just mentioned. In fiscal year 21, our agency launched that pilot program, and between July and December of 2020, approximately $12,000 was awarded to residents and businesses for vouchers and rebates to residents and businesses that installed the linked cameras to the CityWatch network. It's the agency's intention to create a communication campaign that highlights this rebate program in the coming months to city agencies in order to allow them to participate as co-producers of public safety in their neighborhoods. While it's not currently budgeted, it's estimated that this campaign will result in about $50,000 worth of rebates and vouchers to Baltimore's residents and businesses in fiscal year 20. We haven't broadly communicated that this program exists, and we've had about 100 folks already apply just in a few short months. With regard to amendments, the agency respectfully requests that Page 2, Section 41-4B32 be amended to read as follows. With regard to exclusions, that the face surveillance system doesn't include the following: biometric security system designed specifically to protect against unauthorized access to a particular location or electronic device; video and audio monitoring or recording technology such as surveillance cameras, wide-angle cameras, and wearable body cameras; automatic license plate readers, closed-circuit television cameras, and gunshot detection hardware and services. I'll close by saying that while the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement supports the intent of the council bill, we respectfully ask the city council to consider the agency's recommended amendments and craft a policy that carefully strikes a balance between protecting the constitutional liberties and civil rights of Baltimore's residents with enabling BPD's ability to effectively utilize camera technology to solve crime. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Director Jackson, excuse me, Director Guy. Next, we're going to move on to the Law Department.
It is Director Jackson.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Director Jackson.
Hey, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We're taking, are you taking questions for the agencies after all the agencies have presented?
We are. I do understand that Director Jackson may have to leave a little bit early if you have a question for her.
I do specifically for Director Jackson, if that's okay.
Sure.
Thank you for accommodating my request, Mr. Chair. Director Jackson, I heard a lot of discussion about the private security camera rebate program. I'm very much interested in that. As you know, I wrote that legislation and was the chief sponsor of it. Does this legislation impact that program in any way?
Thank you for your question, councilman. I do believe that this legislation would impact that program in a couple of ways. With regard to the rebate program, I don't know that it would make a lot of sense for us to broadcast a campaign associated with connection to CityWatch systems if, in fact, we're saying that identification methods that may be used by the Baltimore Police Department, including the CityWatch closed-circuit TV system, would be included in this legislation. It would make the rebate a program that would be unnecessary.
But Director, let me just jump in. The program itself doesn't... So when you purchase a private security camera, that's not connected to the CityWatch camera system. Rather, the camera's location and the ownership of the camera is registered in the CityWatch Community Partnership. So there's a database of, for example, if I live at One Main Street and there's a crime at Three Main Street, BPD can look in the database and see that there is a camera at One Main Street. BPD can contact me, and I have a choice as to whether or not I choose to provide that camera footage to BPD in the investigation of a crime that occurred at Three Main Street, just to be clear. So knowing that, you're telling me that this would impact that legislation? Or that program, per se?
I would say that you provided me some clarity that I didn't have. I think that it still raises some questions from my perspective with regard to what footage would become available, whether it was based on self-determination of a video camera holder or not. For example, if a resident decided that they were going to provide the footage to BPD in order to assist with the investigation of a crime, I'd like to understand, I guess, how this legislation then interpret any potentially identifiable information that would be gathered from that in ways that may result in community members not necessarily making their cameras available to BPD to begin with.
Okay. No, I appreciate that, and I'd like to continue that conversation during the process, Mr. Chair. And, you know, I'll reserve my other question for the Law Department with respect to that. But Director Jackson, I would like to set up a meeting offline to discuss kind of the progress of that program, the number of applicants, how quickly we're getting those approved, how many have been denied, et cetera, et cetera, just to kind of do a deep dive into what we got going on and figure out the best course moving forward. Because I'm a bit concerned when I hear about other city agency involvement in it, and I'm not sure how, you know, kind of how that pans out with the original intent of the legislation as we develop the program. But yeah, I'll reach out separately, and hopefully we can set something up, and you can help get me up to speed on where we're at. So appreciate all your time. Thank you, Director Jackson. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Costello. Any other?
I have a question for Director Jackson.
Please do.
Thank you. So Director Jackson, in the exclusions portion of the bill, it specifically notes that excluded from this ban is information technology security systems. There's also a ban on physical access control systems. And there are, I'm trying to find, surveillance devices that do not record or transmit audio or video that can be remotely accessed. The question I would have is, we tried to be very intentional in the drafting of this bill to not impact what we would probably commonly refer to as Ring doorbells, which is what I believe the intention of the rebate program is. How would you define those devices differently than what we have in the bill already?
So I would say that the recommended amendments that I made were not only to include the home security systems, i.e. Ring, or Vivint, or Google sorts of devices, but also to account for the closed-circuit television cameras in general. That was with the understanding that has now been clarified, I think, by the other councilmen, where I thought that the connection into the closed-circuit television system is what was happening during the rebate program. Doesn't appear to be the case. I would classify the Ring-type doorbells as the video and audio monitoring or recording technology such as surveillance cameras, wide-angle cameras, and wearable body cameras is where you all have that categorized, specifically being everything leading up to and not including the wearable body cameras.
Can I ask a follow-up, Mr. Chair, on that? Director Jackson, does the current CityWatch program already use facial recognition technology in the closed-circuit cameras that they are using in the program?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions of Director Jackson? So we'll move on and open up the floor to the Law Department.
Hello, Mr. Chair. This is Hillary Ruley of the Law Department. We stand by our bill report and approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Hillary. Next, we'll move on to the Baltimore City Police Department.
Good afternoon. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, for the record, my name is Michelle Wurzberger, and I am the Director of Government Affairs for the Baltimore Police Department. I know you all should have received a copy of our bill report, but I just want to go over briefly some of the highlights that I think are really important. First and foremost, I want to make clear that we are acting in good faith to work with the council to establish good policy that protects all of our residents. BPD's mission statement says that the department is dedicated to upholding the Constitution and enforcing laws and affair in partial and ethical manner. We commit to creating and maintaining a culture of service that builds trust and legitimacy in all communities, values the sanctity of human life, and provides for the safety and well-being of all. We approached our bill report in that same spirit and sought to acknowledge the concern expressed by advocates, the bill sponsor, and residents that facial recognition technology could be used in a way that inadvertently produces false positives, which could negatively impact certain groups, especially women of color. We don't want anyone to feel targeted or unfairly threatened by BPD. We understand, as does this council, that the only way we can improve our relationship with the community we serve is to acknowledge their concerns and work cooperatively with them to create new ways of interacting that everyone can embrace. We believe that this type of technology should not be banned, but that any agency that utilizes it must establish clear protocols and safeguards to ensure that it is used responsibly. In developing our proposal, we reviewed other departmental policies, including those that were sent to us by the bill sponsor and a variety of scholarly papers on the topic. We embrace the recommendations put forward by the Association of Computing Machinery's U.S. Technology Policy Committee, which shares our belief that any bias and its effect are scientifically and socially unacceptable. To mitigate that bias, the ACM suggests and BPD concurs that guardrails must be put in place to ensure accuracy, transparency, and accountability. Therefore, we suggest that any city agency who wishes to utilize the technology discussed in this bill must adhere to the following requirements. First, establish clear policies for each application that articulates who is authorized to use the technology and under what circumstances and to what level of human oversight the technology is to be used. Second, those policies have to be posted on the agency's website to ensure increased transparency. Then, all users of the technology must receive mandatory training that includes, but is not limited to, the history of the technology, the purpose of the established policy, agency standard operating procedures, data protection, image enhancement regulations, prohibited use, and the impact and consequences of policy violations. The agency must conduct annual audits on the use of the technology and post those findings on the department's website. In addition to those requirements, the BPD would also voluntarily agree to include the following provisions in its policy for each technological application. In accordance with the Mayor's Executive Order from July 2019 on Advancing Public Safety and Access to City Services and BPD Policy Number 1021, any information obtained through the use of this technology is not to be shared with ICE and furtherance of civil immigration enforcement efforts. Second, the State's Attorney's Office will be notified whenever an arrest was assisted by the use of facial surveillance technologies. In accordance with BPD Policy Number 824, body-worn camera data shall not be used to create a database or pool of mugshots or be used as fillers in photo arrays or be searched using facial or voice recognition software. Finally, the constitutional limitations apply to facial recognition deployments. As such, the technology is never to be used in violation of an individual's constitutional rights under the First, Fourth, or Fourteenth Amendments, such as surveillance based solely on religious, political, or social views or activities, participation in lawful events, the race, ethnicity, citizenship, place of origin, age, disability, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, or other classification protected by law against discrimination. We believe that these safety measures will protect any compromised fundamental human and legal rights of individuals to privacy, employment, justice, and personal liberty, while also allowing us to embrace new technology that may contribute substantially to our ability to solve crimes and protect our residents from those who wish to cause them harm. Finally, I'd like to note just a couple of additional layers of accountability that pertain to BPD. First, and most of you know this, given the briefing we gave, I believe it was last month, any policy, training, and auditing method established in conjunction with this technology and under the proposed proposal discussed today would have to be created in cooperation with our monitoring team, Department of Justice, with input from the public. And whenever we seek to acquire new technology, we are required to inform the public and discuss that technology with our monitoring team and DOJ. In fact, we have developed a draft policy to guide how that effort is approached. You can review that draft policy, which is Number 606 on our website. With that, Chairman, I would urge the committee to adopt the amendments proposed in our bill report. And I just want to point out that I'm joined today by a number of my BPD colleagues who are prepared to elaborate on our position and how we currently utilize the technology, our forthcoming equity analysis, or how these requirements would be operationalized under the consent decree. Joining me are Colonel Cherie Briscoe, who manages the Criminal Investigations Department, Lieutenant Colonel John Herzog, who works with Colonel Briscoe, Will Joyner, who is our Equity Officer, Chief Woody Davis, who is our Chief Technology Officer, and Drew Vaught, who is our Managing Director of Data-Driven Strategies. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, we're going to hear from the Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Liam Davis of Baltimore City DOT. I hope everyone received the copy of our bill report. I noticed it's not online. I apologize. We did submit it rather late. It came in this morning after some internal back and forth. So just to provide some context, under the previous terms legislation, our agency position was no objection. With some of the changes to this version of the legislation, the current term, including the exclusions list and the exemptions list, we felt it was a good idea to just specify two items that DOT would like to be in the exclusions list. So we are supportive, recommend- So we are supportive recommending amendment. Those two exclusions are automated traffic enforcement cameras. So we're talking red light, speed, truck and potentially automated bus lane enforcement cameras if we get the state authorization. And then traffic monitoring CCTV cameras. So CCTV cameras under the legislation are in the inclusions list, at least the way I, I was reading it. DOT does operate numerous CCTV cameras across the city for traffic monitoring purposes. There isn't really a focus on facial recognition necessarily. So I'll defer to, I guess, the Law Department as far as whether or not these amendments are truly necessary. But it was something that we just wanted to be safe with so that these vital services within the agency aren't potentially impacted by the legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Liam. And lastly, we'll hear from the Department of, excuse me, not lastly, from the Baltimore City Office of Information Technology.
Mr. Chair, BCIT was unable to make the hearing today, but they do stand by the report in support of, of the bill and their desired role as far as administering the annual report.
Thank you, Nina. Lastly, we'll hear from the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon. Mara James for the Department of Finance. We stand by our report. We do not oppose this legislation. And the Bureau of Procurement would be happy to assist BCIT as needed to provide the annual report.
Thank you, Mara. So, so I, I wanted to ask a question following up on Councilman, Councilman Costello's question with regard to the gap between the camera technology and the actual facial recognition technology. And maybe Councilman Burnett, you can answer this a little bit. Does the bill at all prevent agencies from purchasing cameras? Or sharing information from cameras with the police department should they need to?
Yes, it, it does, it doesn't prohibit the use of purchasing cameras as currently, the technology currently, let me reframe my response here. If, if the cameras do not have facial recognition technology, they are not prohibited from being purchased. I guess is probably the best way to answer that. So I think that, and I think that wasn't really made clear in some of the agency presentations. Because there doesn't stop them from purchasing cameras. It prohibits that particular use of the technology in the camera. They can still purchase cameras for City Watch. They can purchase cameras for traffic monitoring and any other use. And my understanding is that not all, that, that you can get cameras that don't have that technology included.
And just to clarify a little deeper, in the course of an investigation from the BPD, if one of the only pieces of video technology that we had or camera technology that we had happened to have someone's face, let's say we have a traffic camera that sees potentially a suspect walking down the street and we want to confirm that suspect, or try to confirm, given some of the inconsistencies in the technology today. But if we want to try to confirm that that was the individual we were looking for, could they share that information with BPD? Or is that then prohibited by, by this bill? And maybe the Law Department, if you guys can chip in here, it might be helpful as well.
Sure, Mr. Chair. I mean, I don't think that this bill would prevent people from giving information to the government if the person themselves is not using facial recognition software, then they wouldn't be violating the, the bill. So, you know, but if they've used their own facial recognition software and then they've given their results to BPD, that might be a different story. But, you know, just having BPD gets, you know, camera footage from lots of different places. And my understanding is the bill is targeted to the software that tries to automatically match people, not to the camera. But, but again, you know, I think, you know, there's always ways to make a bill read better if that's desired.
Thank you. Any questions from folks on the committee? Councilman Costello, and then I got you, Councilman Burnett, and then Councilwoman Ramos, and then Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So going back to the, to my colleague in the Eighth District, your introductory remarks. So the intention is for this not to apply to any city of Baltimore government camera or software. Is that, or did I understand that? And I apologize if I got that wrong.
So it would apply to both Baltimore City Government and private, private use. But I would, I would point members of the committee to the exclusions inclusions and exclusions list in the bill because it's, it's pretty expansive. We tried to be very clear about what we thought was a reasonable use of the technology and, and what we thought probably needed to, to be looked at further in, in the use of a moratorium and further study.
Thank you. I'm going to reread that list, so I'm, I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Costello. Councilman Burnett, you got a question?
Yeah, so I have a bunch. What I'll do is I'll just do two and then come back around. If that's okay, Mr. Chair. I don't want to dominate the, the conversation. So the, the question, well, first I want, I want to take a step back. When we had this hearing last, in the fall, I did want to extend my apologies to staff from the Baltimore Police Department. I was pretty curt in that hearing. And I just wanted to take an opportunity to revisit the, the language I used. And I didn't call anyone names, but, you know, emotions got in the way. And so I did want to use this platform to, to make sure that I address how I was talking to you all in that last hearing. So just wanted to start there with, with that statement. The questions I have are directed to the police department, but I do have a few for DOT later. Does the Baltimore, so, and I, I preface this by saying that a lot of the focus in testimony I've heard, both in this hearing and the last one, is the use of this technology in solving violent crimes. Does the Baltimore City Police Department currently regulate, only regulate the use of this for felonies and/or Part One crimes? So are you, are you using this beyond the scope of violent crime?
So, thank you for that question. And first, let me just respond to your statement, Councilman. Thank you for that note. We, we definitely appreciate that. You know, we, we all have the same goal of making good policy and we are absolutely your partner in that. To your question, no, we currently do not limit the, the scope of this, the, our use of this technology to those particular crimes.
Okay. My second question, does the Baltimore City, and I know you addressed this in your opening, but I, I still wanted to, to get through it. Does the Baltimore City Police Department, and this could also be directed to, now that we are aware that, I wasn't aware of the connection of the Office of Neighborhood Security, of Neighborhood Safety, so I would direct it to, does, does either department prohibit the use of this technology at First Amendment that protests, rallies or gatherings? Are there current regulations that, that you, you would not use this, this technology in those spaces currently?
So that's an excellent question. And so what we are saying is that we, we don't necessarily have a policy on that unless Colonel Briscoe wants to correct me. But what we are saying is that moving forward, we are absolutely open to adopting policy, a policy that includes that language, both in terms of the use of current technology and additional or new technology, sir.
And I think, it's Director Jackson, so.
Yep. Thank you for your question, Councilman. The Muncie office does not have a current policy on that. I do think that it is worth mentioning that in reviewing the requirements for residents and business owners to participate in the City Watch program, there are not any requirements that prohibit them from purchasing security systems that include facial recognition software. And in fact, while Ring doesn't include facial recognition and Vivint doesn't offer facial recognition, there are other security providers that provide facial recognition to residents and businesses for purchasing on their own.
And just to be, to clarify, sorry, but there, there is no policy around regulating the use of both those, those devices by private use that are a part of this program, as well as the City Watch around First Amendment protected gatherings, protests or rallies?
To my knowledge, there is no current policy.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll come back to the rest of my question.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilman Burnett, for bringing this bill back to us. It's very interesting. I'm learning a lot, so, not my expertise. But you had mentioned in your opening, Councilman, about the facial recognition technology with these algorithms that they use are introduced by us. And obviously, I don't know the science behind the facial recognition technology, but I'm curious if we've talked with any of those providers that they've said that they want to change their algorithms. I don't even know if that's even possible, frankly. But I'm just, I'm just curious.
So I think we're likely to hear testimony from a National Trade Association today that's going to address that and, and rebut, frankly rebut the, that comment. So they, the, I can, absolutely not an expert in the technology itself, but from the research that I've done, one of the, the issues with it is that when this technology is developed, essentially what they do is they, they feed faces into it. And then as the algorithms, the algorithms get better and better and not necessarily, it's not like a flip book and, and similar to what the, the police are using, which is like, they're using like things that are already in the database. It actually like uses like dots on your, your facial structure to be able to identify who you are based on like your facial structure itself. So it's not like a direct match, but it's just, it's actually a little bit scarier. And so what happens is when this technology is being developed, there, it is overwhelmingly being developed by folks that are not black, not communities of color, not black women. And so the faces that it is being tested on are, are, it doesn't, it doesn't recognize them as well. And so that's where the MIT research that I, I sent over, and there's a pretty good video in, in that email that explains it a lot better than I can. But that's exactly what they're getting at, is that when the technology is being built, it, it's not including people of color in that process. And so it, it doesn't recognize our faces as well, doesn't, especially darker, darker faces. And so I think it speaks more to a lack of representation in the field. And then, and within, and the lack of diversity within the companies that are doing this. It's not in any way trying to shame anybody in particular, but this is why in the statement I mentioned that there were several multinational corporations, like IBM and Amazon and Microsoft, that have stopped selling this to law enforcement for this very reason.
Thank you. That's the only question I had. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Next, I've got Councilwoman Porter.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This question is geared, I mean, this question is for Ms. Witsberger and Director Jackson. So given the intent to provide alternatives to the facial recognition technologies, have you all been thinking about, I know, Ms. Witsberger, you mentioned quality checkpoints within BPD's infrastructure. What are those, what are those current checkpoints that, that you all have in place to kind of mitigate the, the use of the facial recognition technologies?
Thank you, Councilwoman. That is an excellent question. And during the course of the last hearing is when we really realized that we needed to embrace them. And so we have started kind of developing a framework for how we develop that policy, that training, and of course, the subsequent audits in line with our consent decree process. So, and, and as we have kind of talked about, that is not a quick process by any stretch of the imagination. But what we are prepared to do, and I, I have this understanding, and I don't know if this is accurate, that this session is going to be the first of a, a few work sessions. What we would commit to do is come back to you at the very next session and report out both our, our strategy and our timeline on how and when we will hit all three of those marks for you.
Thank you so much. And I'd be, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, may I have a directed follow up question, sir? Thank you. And I would most likely be particular, like, what will be of particular interest to me is the, the data measure points that you'll be using for, for those facial recognition techni, technology alternatives. And I think that there has to be some sort of inter-agency approach along with DOT, along with Muncie and along with the, the programs mentioned by Councilman Costello and Councilman Burnett as well. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Any other question from folks on the committee? Councilman Glover.
Hello, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've been here writing down some notes and stuff like that. But my question is for BDP. Opposition states that safeguards can be put in place to be able to use facial recognition technologies in non discriminatory form. Can you describe like what those safeguards or whether or not they have been like studied in practical form?
Yes, sir. Good question. And I, I'm just trying to scroll back up to my notes. And so, like I mentioned in my, my, in my opening, we have reviewed a number of, of papers on this topic that have embraced kind of this approach of having very clear policies about who is allowed to use that technology. So limiting it so that not everybody in the world can utilize it. Two, you know, identifying when they can use it. So it's not just, you know, because you want to look somebody up, but because there is something that you are investigating. And then, you know, and, and then kind of the next layer of that is when and what kind of human intervention you have to have. So I will just to take a, a step back for a moment. Currently, whenever we utilize the, the technology that we do have, there is never a circumstance when someone is arrested or a warrant sought directly after using that technology. There has to be some sort of human intervention. There has to be, you know, someone, a person who looks at the results and says, yeah, that makes sense. You know, and so, but that needs to be spelled out in the policy. And also, you know, not only kind of the first line, human intervention, but what sort of review needs to be done on a, on a command basis or, you know, a supervisory level? And then kind of the, the, the next kind of piece of that, the, the next two pieces is, make sure everybody's trained, you know? They have to be trained on how to use it, what the parameters are and what is going to happen if you use it incorrectly. And finally, you know, developing transparency and accountability means you have to then study what happened, you know? What were your results? You know, what, what happened? And so that has got to be a key component of that, of that process. That is what the experts say, and we absolutely and wholeheartedly agree.
Okay. Well, my follow up question to that is, how do you account for natural bias from human intervention?
Well, I, I, I think that you have to have several layers of review. I think that's how you get around that or mitigate that, frankly.
Mr. Chair, can I have one other question to Councilmember Burnett, please?
Sure, go for it.
So my question to you, Councilman, is do you think that, well, I don't know, I don't say do you, but why isn't like the State's Attorney's Office like participating in this forum and like submitting a position on this? Like, I think it's very important that we also bring them in the middle of this hearing as well.
Yeah, I agree. It was a, when we were, we were putting this together, well, it's funny you mention that because we're not working for questions this hearing. I had a question for the State's Attorney's Office and realized that we had extended the invite to them. So one of the things that I do for sure, the way I wanted to approach this process, was to have a series of work sessions to follow. I explicitly asked the Chair to not have a vote on this today so that we could get all the information from the agencies, review amendments that were being proposed, and also get that public testimony in as well so that we can kind of, all of us can have a very clear picture about the impact of what's being proposed and how it's used. And so, yeah, I did have a question for them and realized, oh, wait, they should probably be here. So I'll say I'll definitely be working with their staff once we reschedule or schedule our first work session to follow up to make sure that we can ask them about this as well because I did have a question around how this is used in trials.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question. And BPD, this question goes to you. So you talked a little bit about MRIS in your testimony, and you also compared it to the sort of old-school mugshot book. Do we have any data? Do we have any insight on the effectiveness of the sort of manual process of checking faces against mugshots? Are individuals any better at identifying a facial match than the machine is? So I'll leave that out there.
That's an excellent, excellent question, Councilman. Who from our team wants to take that?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for that question, Councilman. Colonel Briscoe here. So that's a good question to ask, is the machine, so really, and I know we're not specifically speaking of mirrors as a part of this conversation, but I can only reference that as in terms of that is what we had and what we use. So essentially, that is a digitized photo book. And it really just, when they submit the request, that when the detective is submitting the request to the mirror system, it's giving them the percentage of this potentially based on highest score percentage is your, is an option to look at as a lead. And then there is a human intervention portion. So to say that is that better at it, what it does is give, it's kind of cuts the time because there are thousands upon thousands of photographs to look through or look at as consideration. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily say better at it. It assists us in a, a way in terms of efficiencies. But of course, Director Wirthberger just spoke to, you know, some of the challenges that we have and the things that we're working on to improve and enhance ourselves in terms of transparency and accountability and those things. But I just wanted to just kind of give it some context. So it's not replacing human intervention. That's still a part of, of the process. I hope that answers your question some.
It does. Thank you. And then in the course of, and, and, you know, we should all caution in the context of this, this bill cannot technically affect the BPD, but it, it sort of will by way of all the other means that agencies interact with BPD. So I want to be thoughtful about that. I'll move on if there are other questions from folks on the committee. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This would be directly related to the Maryland Image Repository System. I know we don't have a representative here for this session, but can anyone at BPD speak to whether the system submits its software to be tested for accuracy and bias to the National Institute Standards and Technology? Do they conduct any checks to ensure the software is tested for accuracy or bias? And if you aren't aware of that, does, does the Police Department itself conduct checks for accuracy and bias? And if not, why? And if so, can you elaborate more on it?
Thank you, Councilman, for, for that question. So given that it is a state piece of technology, I, I'm not exactly sure what they do. And, and perhaps either Chief Davis or Director Vaught could weigh in on, on that piece of it. What I will say is that the team that is here, as well as some folks who were not able to make it, including Deputy Commissioner Danny Murphy, who's in charge of the Compliance Bureau, we've had some very, very intense conversations about how do we, you know, intervene? What sort of actions do we need to take to make sure that this technology that is being utilized can, can be audited appropriately, effectively, and accurately? And so that is why we have Chief Davis. And, you know, we're looking at a couple of different ways that we could perhaps plug into the technology, you know, to, to, to conduct those sort of audits. But that is something that we are still investigating in all fairness.
Michelle, this is our Chief Davis. I would add that, as you had mentioned, this is a state system. We have no insight into the certification of the state system. We do plan to expand our engagement and communication with the state as relates to the system. We want to know more about what it does, how it works, what safeguards do it, does it have in place? Does it have an ability to audit? There are a lot of questions that have evolved from this process, which we find to be excellent. You know, this is right in line with how we are working towards improving technology. And we need to better understand the technologies we have. So we, we do plan and we'll be engaging the state in, in asking a lot of questions about the system so that we can be better prepared to answer your questions.
And I had a quick follow-up, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So in the, these departments' testimony, and it was also conveyed in the Mayor's Office's testimony, a request to include body cameras, equal dash cameras, I believe, and license plate readers. Can the department, either department expound upon why you would want to use facial recognition technology on these devices? And the reason, to frame the question, it's really your response. My concern with that is that those in particular are very likely to capture individuals who may not be involved in crime. You're just driving down the road or in a body camera situation, I may be showing, I may be someone that reported a crime or I'm in a domestic violence situation and you're coming to help me. Why would the department want to use these devices or use facial recognition technology in these, in these instances?
So what I will say to that is we, we don't necessarily want to use them as facial recognition technologies. In fact, that was the exact point. We wanted them to be listed in the exclusion list because they are in fact not facial recognition systems. And we wanted everybody to be abundantly clear about that fact.
My apologies, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
May I?
That was the same reason why my office listed it as well. And so I'm happy to make a suggested amendment, either associated with listing it as an exclusion or making sure that potentially the bill specifically indicates that we wouldn't use any of these sorts of technologies that have facial recognition built into them.
I misunderstood. My apologies.
Thank you. Any other questions from folks on the committee? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to move on to public testimony. So we'll now take public testimony and, one moment. So the committee staff will coordinate the public testimony, so please be patient. If you are connecting online, please use the raise hand function to indicate that you wish to testify. Each speaker must state their name prior to speaking. Users who call in cannot be identified by name and will be unmuted by the host one by one. If you wish to testify, please say so when you're unmuted. Attendees will hear two beeps when they are unmuted. Please state your name in the beginning of your testimony. If a speaker is inaudible, they will be directed to call back or to provide the testimony in the chat function. With that, you said Jake, Jake Parker?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, I'm Jake Parker. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm with the Security Industry Association, which represents companies providing safety and security products in Maryland and nationwide. Our members also include most of the leading developers of facial recognition in the U.S. We support addressing the concerns about this technology with policies ensuring its only use for appropriate purposes and acceptable ways. However, the ban on the technology in the proposed bill would make it impossible to do this. We support the Baltimore Police Department's proposal just discussed to replace the prohibition with safeguards on law enforcement and public sector uses that will help prevent misuse and reduce the possibility that innocent individual could suffer negative consequences. At the same time, this will preserve some of the proven benefits for Marylanders. There's many examples. So in 2018, it was used to help identify the gunman that killed five people and injured others at the Capitol Gazette headquarters in Annapolis. In 2019, it was used to help identify a bank robbery suspect and break up an organized crime ring in Montgomery County. Last year in Baltimore, it was used to help identify the perpetrator of a brutal assault on public transit, which was confirmed by the victim. And earlier this year, the technology was used by law enforcement to help quickly identify several hundred of the individuals who attacked the U.S. Capitol. I'll say we could, we could also support some sensible rules for use of technology in the private sector. However, the bill would ban nearly all private sector applications, including everyday uses, with obvious benefits to its users and applications that really have nothing to do with surveillance, policing, or civil liberties concerns. In fact, most private sector applications are opt-in where there is already user consent or an existing requirement to verify one's identity. This includes allowing customers to prove their identities conveniently and securely for banking transactions, other financial transactions, customer service, hospitality, and others. Technology is also becoming increasingly important to COVID-19 mitigation protocols where it's integrated into technologies that allow users to provide information like vaccine validation and other information for the activities that they're authorized to do. So under the ordinance, businesses and individuals in Baltimore City would face criminal penalties through fines or imprisonment for uses in everyday operations, even social media applications. An intervention in commerce, private property, and lives of individuals, I think, demands a stronger and thorough justification. And lastly, we think Americans generally support the use of this technology. You had a leading poll firm last year, a couple months ago, found 68% of Americans believe the technology makes society safer, 70% support uses by banks and to improve workplace safety. And there's other results too indicating little public support for banning or heavily restricting the port of technology. I'm happy to, I know there's a couple of questions that came up with some of the technical issues here, which I'm happy to address, but I didn't want to take any more time here.
If you could submit your testimony as well, and if you had other thoughts that are relevant to this, please do submit those. Next up, we have Eric Perez.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Comer. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Okay, good morning, sir. Members of the committee, you have our written testimony, and we stand by our opposition to this bill 21001. I'm here with Robert Cherry, who's the Chair of our Legislative Committee and also a homicide sergeant with the BPD. I'm also the co-chair of the Legislative Committee and also a homicide on the floor with a detective with the homicide unit as well. I just want to go into one specific example, not, not going into many specifics of a case we just had this month in our squad that used the facial recognition system, the mirror system, which was, came to be a very successful case. But it also, you know, used, we also used the corroboration of video. We obtained, we have a witness who in turn was administered a photographic array, which corroborated our evidence that we had, that we knew our suspect was from this, the mirror system, from the facial recognition program. All of the evidence that combined with that being said, we came to a happy conclusion and we granted permission to get a warrant by the State's Attorney's Office for a first-degree murder in that case as well. And with that being said, we would be very happy to assist the city council with the work session and the use of this technology moving forward as well.
And if I just may add, Mr. Chair, just to wrap up our two minutes, I think like Detective Perez said, and Colonel Herzog, Colonel Briscoe, they realize this too. Although we can't get into specifics of that case, you know, we did speak with the sponsor. We spoke with you, and I think it's important for your committee to know that the human intervention is right where Detective Perez said, that the technology is just one piece in our toolbox of fighting violent crime. It helped us in our case on Riverside Avenue a few years ago in Councilman Costello's district. We were the ones that actually worked the case with the MTA bus operator in October of 2020, where us and the MTA were able to identify those two suspects, get them off the street within 12 hours of that murder. And the case that Detective Perez is referring to, we just actually arrested the suspect two days ago, and we were able to do that within one week of that brutal homicide in West Baltimore. So it is, it does work. The human invention comes in when you have trained investigators in the BPD who know the street, who know how to get the job done, and who are working closely with the State's Attorney's Office, the United States Attorney's Office, and the AG on getting that done. So at this time, we're opposed to it, but again, we're willing to work with you and assist the BPD in helping you shape, you know, what policy the sponsor is looking for to keep Baltimore safe.
Thank you, Mr. Cherry.
Thank you, sir.
Any, any other comments, testimony? Please use the raised hand function on the bottom right. Okay, seeing no further testimony and no callers in, actually. We are going to go into recess, and we're going to call a work session at a later date. I want to thank everybody for all the insight during the court process, and I think.
Mr. Chair, there's a couple of folks that I don't think that they use the raise hand function. But like, did we call in Jake Parker? I just saw that come up.
We did call in Jake Parker. He was first, and then we just, Robert Cherry, go next.
Got it. Okay. All right. Sorry, I missed that.
Before we close.
Caitlin Young just did it. Okay. There's, I was gonna say, I knew I had some people that said they were gonna testify.
Okay. Caitlin?
Greetings, Chairman and members of the committee. My apologies. I'm paying attention to the judicial proceedings committee at the same time, so please.
Oh, no worries. You, you got two minutes.
Yes, sir. It won't take that long. I just want to highlight first and foremost that the ACLU of Maryland stands in strong support of this legislation. As you all know, we are constantly fighting to protect the civil liberties and civil rights of Marylanders. And with regard to facial recognition software, we have, I refer you to our bill report, which has been submitted to committee staff. It points out a few things, in particular, some of the concerns that were raised about how certain races, in particular, black and brown people, are often mischaracterized or misidentified. Also, we have serious Fourth Amendment concerns as usual, as it pertains to unreasonable search and seizure, where those individuals who are not doing anything or committing any crime, maybe just participating and exercising their protected First Amendment speech at a protest might be subject to unnecessary surveillance or unreasonable surveillance and therefore add it to one of these databases. We want to just make sure that those rights are protected for citizens. So as we continue this conversation and we move to work session, we'll continue to be a resource to this committee as you work through this. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the committee.
Thank you, Caitlin. I'm going to leave the line open just for a couple more seconds in case there are other folks that weren't able to figure out how to use the raise hand function. Once again, it's at the bottom right of your screen if you are signed into the meeting.
I know we had at least one other. I thought he was going to join, but I'll forward his written testimony to the committee, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Burnett. And with that, do you have any closing?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I don't see the ACLU.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I don't see the ACLU report in my inbox. So that could be forwarded to us. That'd be great.
Okay, sounds like.
Can I have a copy of it? Yeah.
Well, we'll make sure that we get that out to everyone.
Thank you.
All right, so you know, further testimony, and any further questions or comments from the committee, this hearing is in recess, and we will announce a work session at a later date. Thank you.